Yeah.
Now, we're live.
We're live. Okay. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for 10:00 AM. I'm going to announce the adjournments. I'll announce all four of them and then we'll go one by one. 2018-198A, 85 Trenton Court, Staten Island. You want me to do it separately?
Yeah, then I'll come in and announce the next one.
Okay. 2016-4463, 6202, 14th Avenue, Brooklyn.
Right, so this one requested an adjournment, and I'm just going to read the seeker comments for the benefit of the applicant so that they can keep moving on on the comments. We have an open DOT. We have yet to receive a response to comments from August of 2019. The last email from December of 2019 said that the applicant were getting their survey data together. And so, you know, I hope they got it together before March because now I'm not sure how they can do it. We do have closed hazmat with E designation approved. We have open noise. There was a sign-off received in August. But we discussed it a lot in the board and we still had concerns. And Tracy Benkay, our seeker officer, asked the applicant on December 20th to check the EAS analysis regarding playground noise and update that before. And that still hasn't been done. And then school safety, we're still waiting to receive response to the December 2019 comments from DOT. And feel free to jump in, Tracy, if you, if I left out anything.
That's everything.
Everything. Great. Okay, next one.
Item number three, 2019-24bz, 2721, No. 14th Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, this one, there's a seeker comment, and then I have a question. The seeker comment is that we have open DOT. It was sent to, the application was sent to DOT and we received comments in December of 2019. And we're still waiting for a response from the applicant, but otherwise the other reviews are closed. And in the adjournment request, the applicant said that they requested an adjournment to quote, "Allow everyone to attend." I don't know what that means, if he's talking about consultants or he or she is talking about consultants or whether they're talking about public because, you know, the public is attending the way it attends currently, which is to dial in. We don't have any idea when we will be back to public hearings. So if you want to move, public hearings in person, so if you want to move your application along, I recommend you just assume it's going to be teleconference for forever.
Well, there was opposition on this case. This is the rooftop parking thing, so.
Right. Okay, yeah, there was opposition, but I don't know what they're talking about, if they're talking about the public or if they're talking about the consultants. And Ms. Shonda had her hand up.
I had a question. Is the work, sorry, thank you. I had a question. Is the work still going on on site? Because this.
I thought it was stopped, but.
Okay.
Okay, we could. Those are questions posed. I don't know. And, and, you know, one is, is there a stop work order and is it being defied? And then the other is, is work going on? And they got one of those allowable work permits because that.
Okay. Item number four, 2019-25bz, 40-48 Commercial Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, so the seeker comments are, the noise review is tentatively closed. We received a sign-off, however. Applicant plans to file an appeal of the attenuation requirement from zoning code section 123-32 for special mixed-use districts for buildings. So we don't know, we'd like to know what the status of that noise appeal is. And if it, if they succeed in their appeal, then we'll need a new noise letter and new notes on the plan. And then we'll need notes on the plans regarding the E designation. And that's it. Anything? Did I leave out anything, Tracy?
No, I do think they're working on the appeal, but I'm not sure how long it's going to take.
And Jella has her hand up.
Oh, they told me they're submitting a revised analysis. And they're going to copy BSA on that for the appeal.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, decision items. Item number five, 75178bz, 200-15 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, so now we're moving into the decisions, right? Okay, so hold on a second. So this is still just for the, not to confuse the people who are listening in, this is for, this is still the executive session. So you cannot call in. We will not answer your phone, so please do not call in. So on this application, no submission was required. In fact, I think mostly we don't have any submissions required on these particular decisions. So I would like to make a motion to approve on condition. This was discussed quite a lot over the course of the hearings, on condition that tires being stored in, that the tires should be stored inside after business hours and stacked against the wall and no hire during the wall during business hours. And no parking on the grassy strip. Only vehicles awaiting service overnight are permitted on site. Lighting needs to be maintained away from the residence. No clothing bins are permitted on the site. Maintain the dumpsters in the enclosure and maintain the site free of graffiti and debris. The asphalt and walls in good condition. And this was hours of operation, where 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM Monday through Friday and 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Saturday, close Sunday. Any, did I leave out anything? Okay, so for a motion to grant on those conditions.
Oh, you want to do it now? Okay.
Yeah.
Marjorie Pearl, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application's been granted. Stop my phone. Okay. Whoa. Item number five, six, 2017-247bz, 1387 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
No submission was required and there are no conditions other than the usual, no more than 50% of the existing walls on the exterior or 50% of the structure floor, the joists can be removed, is the usual standard. So on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, next item is 2017-270bz, 1434 Utica Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay. Let's see, there was nothing to submit. So I'd like to make, sorry?
No, I'm saying yes.
Okay, we did receive the final EAS. And so I would like to, first of all, direct our project manager and counsel with respect to the drawings because we had a lot of trouble getting the right collection of drawings. So that drawings A4 and A5, which were submitted on November 18th, 2019, need to be added to the full eight-page set that was submitted on February 13, 2019. And swap out the later drawings in the older set. So I think it might be a switch of that. So I think we received the A4 and A5 on February 13 and the full set on November 18. So just swap out the new ones for the old ones. Okay? And so in terms of a motion to approve on condition, no parking on the sidewalk. Any other comments on this one? Any other conditions? No? Okay, so motion to move on that condition.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, next item is 2018-15bz, 250 West 26th Street, Manhattan.
Again, with this one, I'd like to make a note to our counsel and project manager that there are two sets of plans that need to be combined into one to create drawings A2 to A8 and SK1. Those should all be combined into one set. But otherwise, there was nothing to submit, so I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Next item, 2018-146bz, 1315 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. So nothing to submit, but I just want to make sure that our resolution, I've mentioned this at a prior hearings, that our resolutions, so as again a note to counsel and project manager, that the resolution has to be clear that the only area in the attic that has structural headroom of eight feet or more and is therefore permitted to be floor area is that shown on the attic plan. In other words, no kind of expanding into further floor area.
Only shown on attic plan. Okay.
Yeah, so it's the only area in the attic that has structural headroom of eight feet or more shown on the attic plan is permitted to be floor area. That's what we're granting. Okay?
Okay.
So based on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda? Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, 2019-64bz, 1334 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, so there were no further submissions and other than the standard note, 50% of the existing walls on the exterior, on the perimeter and 50% of the floor joists must be retained or the special permit is void. So on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, item number 10, 2019-64, oh, sorry, I already did that one. Item number 11, 2019-65bz, 373 Avenue W, Brooklyn.
So the applicant provided an approved ZRD1 as requested that the subject zoning lot may apply the FAR of the predominantly built-up area, which is great to get that because it shows how the DOB actually analyzes that. That was useful, I thought. So I'm okay with the application to move forward. And other than the standard condition removal of more than 50% of the exterior walls on the exterior and 50% of the floor joists will avoid the special permit, so condition on that.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Next item, item number 12, 2019-174bz, 4558 Bell Boulevard Borough of Queens.
Um, this one was maybe, maybe Daryl knows the answer to this. You know, when this opened, this is a legalization. No, we couldn't, yeah, I just couldn't find it without listening.
I don't remember what's on my head.
Yeah. Does anybody else have a note on when this opened? Yeah, Daryl. Commissioner Otley Brown?
She's muted.
She's muted. Sorry.
January 2013.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, no, I'm sorry. That one was the one that's on West 26th Street. East 24th, Second West. No, actually, for this one, I don't have it.
All right, it's funny. Okay. Okay, so maybe, and this is a question to counsel. I don't know whether we need to actually state it on the resolution, but maybe we could reach out. On the record, we're reaching out to applicants to find out the date of opening, if it's relevant. It may not be. Because in terms of, this is a special permit for a PCE, I always like them to start on the day of the decision as opposed to reaching back to the time when they first opened. It's just easier to, sometimes you end up having to come back in a year, otherwise, right? So if it's okay with everybody to start the PCE from the date of decision, then the opening date's not so important. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So, all right, so then I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, good. So special order calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 13, 1636bz, 1885 Westchester Avenue, The Bronx.
So we're moving right in now to the actual review session, just so everybody knows. Where the commissioners will discuss the applications, but please do not call in. We'll, we'll, and whenever that, when this is done, then we'll move into a hearing on two items this morning. Okay, so community board waived their recommendation. We finally got the community board decision. We have proof of continuous use, replacement of trash enclosure door and fence. I didn't find a statement about substantial prejudice that would occur if the variance were an extended, as is required by Rule 1-07.3B2. We do have a Lumen spread diagram. And only drawings two and three out of a three-drawing set were submitted. So we need to have a complete set signed and sealed. Any other comments on this? No other comments? Okay. I could, should I go around the room like I normally do yet? Commissioner? Okay. Oops, there we go. Commissioner Shonda, oops.
I had the same comment with regards to the drawing completion and the prejudice, not enough documentation provided. At least documentation, not clarification provided in a narrative.
About the prejudice, substantial prejudice? Okay. And Commissioner Brown?
I, I just had one question about the lighting plan because the lighting plan shows that the lighting looks a little high on the inside of the fence along the border of the property, but then it drops to zero right over the lap line. And although it is commercial use right there, so I'm really not worried, I'm just curious as to how that happens, that it goes from a number and then drops to zero literally within a half a foot over the fence. If they could just explain that, that'd be helpful.
I see Commissioner Sheta smiling at your comment, so he probably agrees with that discovery. Okay.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Dara for that. Yes, I noticed the same, and I believe this is something they call it overriding. You run the analysis and if you don't like it, just override it. I don't know how this is done, but this is, I believe this is the way it's done. But apart from that, I, when I, when I tried to read the text, especially on the front elevation and on the lighting plan, I wasn't able to, like, when you zoom in, it's kind of illegible. It's tough to read. Yes, when you make it like smaller, the zoom ratio's 100% or even 80%, you could read it, but if try to zoom out to the text and look at it, it's kind of illegible. So I would appreciate if we have some sort of like more legible plans. If they print from AutoCAD directly to PDF and submit to us without like printing and then re-scanning, I believe it's, it's going to be much, much, much better. The other thing I would, I would mention is, yes, it's an adjacent property to the north. West is, is commercial. And I, I did notice that the luminous spread values are kind of like 3.4, then 4.3, 4.5. I, I want to say these, these kind of like values are high, but I will, I would go with them because of two things, because of the nature of the property next door. And there are like no legal windows for that small hairstyling building, the one-story building next to the property. So just not like we're allowing high values for the luminous spread. This is just a special case. So I'm okay with it for these two reasons.
Okay, okay, fair. Commissioner? Shabeta?
The only thing I would add is actually just a question to the board. Would the board be opening, open to verbal testimony as to prejudice? Or do you want the statement being submitted?
Well, I think the issue is they need to submit some documents, right? They need to submit the plans. Maybe there's something on the Lumen spread, so they might as well update the test, the findings. It's actually a finding, so it should be in the record, right? Yeah. Okay.
Move on?
Yeah, any other comments from anybody? No? Okay.
Item number 14, 20904bz, 109-09, 15th Avenue, Queens. We're still in review session, so no public testimony.
Okay. Okay, so with this one, the applicant actually requested adjournment. And then looking back at the history of the application, the last time we heard this was more than a year ago, like happy anniversary, but more than a year ago, March 26th of 2019. It was adjourned in June and again in December. And it was originally submitted in January 2017, received notice of comments in March of 2017, received a dismissal warning letter in November of 2018. So basically, almost two years later, received a dismissal warning and didn't respond, and responded to that in December of 2018. But then, you know, just doesn't appear. So I, I, we determined that the adjournment was improper, that it's really a failure to prosecute. But in addition to that, I looked up, I looked up what was going on. This was an extension of time to complete construction, right? The project used to have proceeded without us anyway because they have a TCO. So they, they seem to, you know, either DOB ignored the BSA condition or whatever. So they don't need us. So we should dismiss because they've just been dragging along for years and years and there's no reason. Okay, so I actually, when we move into the hearing, I'll make a motion to dismiss this for failure to prosecute. Anybody have any comments on that? I can, people shake their head, but that's not on the record, so. Commissioner Shonda?
No, I have no additional questions.
Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I agree with you that in light of the TCO issuance, we should just dismiss.
Commissioner Sheta?
I was shaking my head and I, I wanted to say yes, if, if, if we feel like somebody's ignoring us without insulting anybody, we should ignore him and, and I believe the right move on this. Yeah, yeah, look. We're all professionals. With all due respect, if, if we feel like we have nothing to contribute, let's just get rid of this case and move forward to another case.
Right, right, okay, fair. And Commissioner Shonda?
Shabeta?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I did that already. Shabeta? It's in order. Don't hold it against me. The screen's in order like that. Okay.
I won't hold it personally. Unless I agree with you, Chair. I think that this is a, it's a year with no activity. And I think that should be a standard for something.
Yeah, exactly. Great. It's, just for the benefit of the public who, I don't know whether they use Zoom for other purposes, but we can see each other, but when it's televised, when it's on YouTube, it's one person speaking at a time. So I see everybody agreeing with, nodding their heads in agreement, and I think that was an answer. But of course, it's not because the public can't see that everybody was smiling or, you know, waving or whatever. That's not open to the public. Okay. So that's that.
Okay, so that concludes the public review session for May 4th, 2020, the 10:00 AM session. So we'll now commence with the public hearing for May 4th, 2020, 10:00 AM. So you can call in when you hear your case. So am I calling the adjournments and the decisions? No, right, we're just doing the two cases?
Yeah.
Okay, so special order continued hearing item, item number 13, 16-36bz, 1885 Westchester Avenue, The Bronx. You can call in. This is Vassalotti Architects, although I know Rothko's office sometimes appears.
So we know that time delay is pretty significant on, on this, on YouTube, so it's like at least 30 seconds. So again, this is case number 16-36bz, 1885 Westchester Avenue, also known as 101, well, 1301 White Plains Road, The Bronx, Vassalotti Architects. Please call in. Meeting ID number 994-75341249. Did, um.
We emailed everybody.
You did? And, and you don't, do you have a phone number that you could text this applicant?
No, I don't have that in front of me. I usually do Vassalotti.
Jaleen, do you have?
Jaleen?
Hold on. Um, no, I'm emailing Hiram now to ask if he's calling in. Okay. I suppose we could do this on second call and just vote on the other one.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to do the second call? So we'll second call, item number 1636bz. So the next item is 20904bz, 109-09, 15th Avenue, Queens. This is the office of Eric Palatnick.
Okay, we'll give them a second to call in. More than a second, 30 seconds to call in. Oh, there we have Elise. Oops, she's in. Okay. Okay.
More than a second, 30 seconds to call in.
Turn off your video, Elise.
Yep, sorry. There you are.
Okay, great. So please state your name.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnick PC.
Okay, so you understand why we're.
Yeah, but may we ask to withdraw without prejudice?
Sure, I guess.
That's our. That's our preference.
Because you don't need it, is that it?
Yeah, we don't think we need it. We just didn't wanna, we haven't actually heard from our client in a really, really, really long time, so that's part of the problem. We really wanted to respond, but we haven't heard from her. She travels, I think she goes to China and things, so it's been a really, really long time, but withdraw without prejudice is our preference. If that's possible, please give them.
That's, um, any comments from counsel, Curder?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all right then. So I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Chair Pro Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Okay, so its application is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Elise, are you covering Westchester?
Uh, no one told me to cover Westchester, so I'm.
Okay, all right.
I can try to get Hiram a call if you guys want me to.
Um, yes, please.
Um, but can I, should I get off the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're very friendly here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's try this other one again.
Sixteen, item number is sixteen thirteen sixteen thirty six BZ, eighteen eighty five Westchester Avenue, White Plains Road, the Bronx. This is Vassalotti Associates.
I think I actually emailed Vassalotti, not Hiram, but. That's okay. Love is listed on the worksheets. But um, Zoom meeting ID number is nine nine four seven four five three four. It's on the web, it's on the front of the screen, twelve forty nine. Phone call is six four six five five eight eight six five six, and the password is zero zero six one two four, showing up in your screen now. So we're still waiting for anyone to call in for sixteen thirty six BZ, eighteen eighty five Westchester Avenue, the Bronx. This is continued hearing item. So Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you don't have Zoom loaded on your computer or your iPhone, or your phone, then you dial the number six four six five five eight eight six five six, and at the prompt, you put in the meeting ID number nine nine four seven five three four one two four nine pound.
Yes, um, it's just like a conference call.
Okay.
And then you put the password in.
No, no, no.
You don't have to put the password in?
No.
Okay.
Not if it's a phone call. That's, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay, that's true. I'm sorry. That's right. It's in the instructions. I apologize.
Do, we don't have a phone number for the Vassalotti applicant?
Don't have the application in front of me. No, it's Jaleen's.
So I'm gonna open up the application. Maybe it's on their drawings.
It will be on their form, their A form, the A form, the associate form.
I'm looking, but Jaleen, if you could look too, if you have access to it.
I do, I am.
Oh, somebody just called in. I see your phone number.
That's, that could be Hiram's.
I did, it's Hiram.
Hi, Hiram. It's Hiram. Okay. I gotta sway you in though, Hiram, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your, your testimony before this board or to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you.
Okay.
And my, my apologies to the board. I thought that the hearing was at two o'clock from what the website said, so.
Really? No, it's one, it's one, ten AM.
Wait a minute, what was, what were you reading on the website? We want to make sure. Can somebody?
Let me look, I'll look again.
Sorry, you know, because what we try to do is make it clear which, which collection of applications are reviewed at which time.
No, it says ten AM. You know what it is? It's that it's by itself separate on the website and it's just before the two AM, two PM, so that might be a little confusing, because I'm looking at the website right now.
Okay, okay, proceed, Hiram.
Um, thank you, thank you. I hope everybody's safe and well. So I believe we've, we've addressed all the uh, prior comments by the board and made timely submissions in addition to hearing from the community board and they're giving an approval of the station as well.
Okay, so you didn't hear our comments from this, from just before?
No.
No, okay, so we, we went through some comments, so we can do them now, okay? We, I did, I mentioned that there was no statement in the statement of facts about the the property suffering substantial prejudice that would occur. And you have to turn off the video, the YouTube video, because we get feedback.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, so I said, we didn't find a statement about substantial prejudice that would occur if the variance were not extended, which is required. It's a, it's a finding required by Rule one dash oh seven point three B two. So if you could amend the statement of facts to include that. We're missing one of the drawings, only drawings two and three out of a three drawing set were submitted. So we need a full sign and sealed set of drawings submitted, because it says drawing one of three or two of three or something, but we don't have three. Um, or actually, we don't have, we don't have one. We got drawings two and three. Um, and then um, uh, about the Lumen spread diagram, several, a couple of commissioners noted that the lighting looks high on the inside of the fence and then drops to zero at the lot line. So the question is, how, how does it do that? Are there, is there a screen, is there a shield that's dropping it to zero? How's it doing that? And also there, there's a problem with the text, the legibility of the text on the elevation, on the front elevation and the lighting plan. So that needs to be clearer. When we, we all read these on PDFs, right? So when we're trying to see the, understand the drawing more closely, we zoom in and at, when you zoom in, you can't read the text. So that needs to be revised or resubmitted. And then, and then there was one comment from Commissioner Sheta about the, the uh, level of the Lumen spread, which was very high on the commercial property line. And he was okay with it because it's high on the commercial property line, but at the same time, the question is, how does it drop to zero when it's right across the property line? Is it because there's a wall in the way? I mean, what is it that's happening that's doing that? And, and those were the comments. Anything out from, by the other commissioners? Anybody want to add anything? No? No. I'm unmuted, Commissioner Ollie Brown. No?
No, you explained it exactly how I would have. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Roth.
So I'll, I'll look at the uh, illumination, illumination plan, other than to say that I think that plan was the previously approved plan from the last time the uh, gas station had an extension of term. So I think that's an approved plan that we submitted. And other than to say that we have nothing, nothing surrounding us. There are no, no buildings or, or any uh, uh, businesses or buildings surrounding the station on any of our frontages or latlines. So but I'll certainly look at the plan.
Okay, so one of the reasons that that's a little confusing is, and I see Commissioner Sheta's hand up. One of the reasons that's a little confusing is that Lumen analysis was not provided with the last submission. So that's why that's a little confusing unless it was just left out of the package, but Commissioner Sheta also has a comment.
Yeah, I just have to acknowledge that I just looked at the plan and it shows the two thousand eighteen revision on it. Uh, that means that it's, it's kind of an older plan. I'm, I was about to ask whether these values are based on uh, actual readings or, I mean, meter readings or just a computer analysis. Uh, but you know what? I, I, I believe because of that Jason properties commercial, I, I don't want to drag this. There is, there is no outcome. I, I would just get, I would ask them to give us like a, a more improved set of plans, especially the one with the elevations on it. Uh, and it, I'm not sure if the lighting plan, we could reproduce it, because it has the same issue. If you try to read the text in the table, um, at the top, left-hand side section of the drawing, if you just zoom in and try to read it, it's terrible. You have to like be very close and you have to do it very slowly. So if they can give us more clear copy of these two plans, the elevations and the lighting, I would just let it go.
Okay. Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Well, if they're doing the revisions, then they could at least give us just a quick memo as to what's going on on that lot line. It'll take them a few minutes. Is it that there are light shields? Because if you look at the northeastern part of the site, you've got two lights. So it could just be that there are shields that are blocking it from going in the back, in which case it's a one-sentence memo explanation. But I think it should be addressed, because otherwise in ten years, they're just gonna submit the same lighting plan again, and it's gonna be unaddressed for the next board.
Right, fair, okay.
I, I believe, I believe we could put it in our resolution that we noticed this. I don't think, I looked at the street view in Google, and if there is a shield that could cause that kind of drop from something above three or four to nothing, just two or three feet away, it could be a really tall fence, which doesn't exist. If you look at the Google view, it doesn't exist. So we, we all know that it's the, might be the person who's done the analysis. I got four point five here. BSA are kind of tough on this. They call for zero. Let me drop you. I, I believe this is it. I, I believe. I'm not sure, but I, I believe this is the way it's done. If, if this, even if this is the case, because it's a commercial property, I, this is, this is our disclaimer here. We could, we, we, we will let it go because it's commercial, but if conditions change.
No, no, but no, no, no. It's, one thing is you let it go because it's high on the border and you say it's commercial next door and you're letting it high on the border. Another is that the drawings misrepresent the situation. So I think Commissioner Ollie Brown, who has her hand up, and I think she's unmuted, she, I think to that point is there needs to be an explanation how it gets zero. If there's no shield or the shield is, you know, miniscule and there's no fence and there's no wall, then it's inaccurate and the drawing shouldn't be accurate. If we want to say, when you spill over the property line, you're a number, you're two or three, that's different. And saying you misrepresented on the drawings and we're letting that go. I, I don't agree with letting it go.
Then, then if, if, if the, if this is the case, I wouldn't ask if there is a shield or not. I would ask like Commissioner Brown asked, what is the reason for that drop? Explanation.
Yes.
Because according to Google again, there is no shield on the fence. The fence is the fence.
Right. Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Right, I think they should just correct the drawings. And then at that point, we could always issue a condition in the resolution that the lighting not be a disturbance to the neighbors. But I think that the documentation that they give us should always be as accurate as possible.
Good, okay. Anybody else want to add it? Any other commissioners want to add anything? Mr. Roth, do you want to go on?
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll address the lighting plan and I'll revise the statement of facts to include the section you, you detailed. And we'll try to clean up the elevation and lighting, the elevation plan so that, and, and in addition to adding drawing number one. All of that said, it, it should not take that long to turn around for us.
Okay, um, what was I saying? So if you could, when you make the corrections on the drawings, so they're more legible, zoom in on your PDF before you submit it to us to make sure that the letters are legible when you do that. That way it'll prevent us from sending it back again. Okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So here's a question for, so basically what we're doing is cleaning up. Um, so my question to counsel is, if they're cleaning up and they're adding their substantial loss, though that's a finding, do we have to keep it open?
I think it makes sense to close at this point since we expect that the findings have been made.
Okay, okay, great. All right then, so if, is everybody okay with us closing? Even though people are nodding their heads yes, for the record. So I'd like to make a motion to close then.
Chair Pro Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
So this application is closed for decision.
Great.
So, okay, so we'll let you know when that date is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so this concludes the public hearing for May fourth, ten AM session. We're with Zoom at two PM for the following cases. Five five one three seven BZ, two two three, two three three oh two Northern Boulevard, Queens. Three three four seven eight BZ, two three three twenty Northern Boulevard, Queens. Seventy two oh four BZ, one forty one fifty four Northern Boulevard, Queens. And fifty one oh six BZ, one eighty eight oh two Union Turnpike, Queens.
And I, and Jella, thank you. Jella had her hand up and I unmuted her. Do you want to say something, Jella?
Yes. Um, no, Nostrand.
Sorry, no.
Do you want to know the status on, an update on the status of two thousand nineteen dash twenty four dash BZ twenty seven twenty one Nostrand Avenue, Brooklyn? The clarification on the adjournment letter and the construction at the site?
Uh, sure. Can we do that? Is that all right?
You want me to recall that case?
Yeah.
So item number, that was an adjournment, item number three, twenty nineteen twenty four BZ, twenty seven twenty one Nostrand Avenue, Brooklyn.
So the applicant, I sent them the questions that the board had and they said that they apologize for the confusion and they would like a Zoom hearing as soon as is available. And there is no, in terms of construction, there is no stop work order and no construction at the site. Um, all construction is complete except for the elevator sign-off and perhaps one other sign-off. So that's the status update I received from the applicant.
So no construction is going on?
No construction is going on.
So I don't under, I don't really understand. They asked for an adjournment, but they didn't really want an adjournment?
When I reached out to them last, like before the hearing, a few weeks before the hearing, when this was being scheduled and I saw their adjournment letter, I asked them if they still need an adjournment letter, because this was actually pushed back a week, this hearing. And they told me they still needed an adjournment. That's what they responded. Um, so.
So they, they gave up their slot because it's already been announced as adjourned. And so we'll put it on for when we can put it on, but it's, you know, the hearing, the calendar is, is tight now because of the way we do these hearings, right? So.
But they don't want to wait for in-person is basically what.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. They don't want to wait for in-person. That's a good answer.
Right, yeah.
I was gonna say, see you in September.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jella. Okay.
Okay, once again, this concludes the public hearing for May fourth to, to twenty twenty, the ten AM session. We'll see you at two.
Thank you, everybody. See you at two.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.